Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, December 15th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie City Council and Audience Choir for the audio. We move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes to the city council meeting held December 1st, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We have a motion for the adoption of the agenda, and I believe we have one additional item. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Maybe from Administration. Counselor Thieson.
I move we adopt the agenda as presented with additions.
Sure. Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. And I think we'll add that addition under Report 8.3. And that additional item is public member appointments to city boards and committees. So that's 8.3 appointments. Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson.
You're welcome.
So that motion's in order for adoption of the agenda. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that would take us into the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. And we had at least one organization that let us know that they'd like to speak to us tonight, and that was a delegation from the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society. So I think I maybe see some members in the back row there. If you'd like to come and join us at the presenter's table, please introduce yourselves for Recording Secretary, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jerry Bower, and I'm president of the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society.
And I'm Dan Wong, and I'm a board member with the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society.
I just should add that Lorraine is here as our vice president. Again, thanks for this opportunity. We are here tonight to make a request for funding for our group. Just a little bit of background, we submitted a budget last summer and made a request for all three municipalities for $10,000. The county has approved their share of that budget. So we are coming back to council ask for a lesser amount. And reason is, things have changed over the last four or five months. The society recognizes that we need to be a more independent group. As you know, we've received previous funding from all three municipalities and a fair bit of in-kind support from the county. Now that the plan has been submitted, and we're in the process of trying to get it endorsed at the provincial level and at each of the three municipalities, we recognize that we need to become more independent, and there's a transitional period where we'll need some additional funding in order to make that happen. So we're here tonight asking for $5,000 for the coming year, 2015, to help make that happen. Again, I'd just like to remind council that you have supported our group since day one, both in the area of funding, but also you've had a member on our board from the very beginning. You endorsed the plan that was submitted last year, and that plan includes a recommendation that our committee continue work, especially in the area of seeking third-party funding. So your support of our group will hopefully help to do some of the funding on some of the projects that we need in the corridor. And also, even though the corridor itself is outside the city limits, I think you all know, most of the users, recreational groups, are from within the city. So again, this transitional period is very important, I think, for this group to continue on. And again, we're making requests for $5,000, or to be honest, and upfront, whatever amount this council would still approve. I think Dan would like to say a few words, too.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given, and counselors. I'd like to give just some information on what the society does, and as well to speak on the request. Wapiti Corridor Planning Society is a group of stakeholders that live in and around the Wapiti Corridor area. And regardless of which jurisdictional boundary you live in, whether it be the city, the county, or the M.D., the assets in that Wapiti Corridor are very important to everyone, and it enhances the life of all the residents living in all three municipalities. We'd love to see one day, with any luck, there'd be one regional government in this area just governing everything. That is a dream right now. It would look after the best interests of everybody and all the industry, but we know that that's a long ways in the future. But taking care of the problems that exist just south of the city, they don't have to be in the future, they can happen now. Some of the issues that the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society has addressed has to do with user conflicts down there. There's been a lot of accidents with off-highway vehicles, these quads, snowmobiles and whatnot, running into non-motorized recreationalists, and even with other motorized vehicles as they cross across the highway and things like that. It's just such a large area, it's hard for any kind of enforcement to take care of. The other thing that happens down there that really has a direct impact on the population growth in our area is the amount of garbage that is deposited down there. We have many landfills in the area, but people still choose to just illegally dump their garbage just south of the city. In 2009, there was an E.S.R.D.-organized dunes cleanup, and they hauled out 180,000 pounds of garbage out of there. And since then, every year, they continue to haul out 33,000 pounds of garbage. Many of our board members take time out of their schedules to go out there and help with that cleanup on a regular basis. Some of the other concerns that are out there have to do with people trespassing on private land. There are people that recreate down there, they don't know where the borders are, so they start off on crown land, and they veer off, and they end up on private land. And private land, it's dangerous to be out there. Sometimes they're hunting zones, sometimes there's traps in place because there are trappers that do some industry there. And sometimes it's in an industrial lease, so you could be entering into a gravel pit, or you enter into a warehouse or forestry area, and it's just dangerous out there. So a lot of these problems have to do with a lack of planning in the area, a lack of signage, and education, but also for ignorance of regulations. And like I said, the area is just far too vast to be enforced, and it's a waste of resources, frankly. The province will eventually be pouring more money into enforcement of an area that it can't enforce. That's money that's being taken away from municipalities to do other things with. So the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society has created this plan, which addresses many of these issues. It helps to organize the area, and organize it in a logical way as the population starts to grow. It will separate out the uses, and we believe that the majority of people out there will avoid conflicts if they know that there is a legal place where they can go and recreate. So the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society, once this plan is adopted by the provincial government, and it hasn't been adopted yet, it's been submitted, it wants to continue to be a voice for the over 6,000 people that it represented during the creation of this plan. 6,000 people was a lot of people to get to, and these were done through different organizations and different clubs and industries. So moving forward, funding is really needed in order to help the society continue to monitor the area and to advocate for the changes that are identified in that plan. City funding especially will help to ensure that city residents will continue to have a voice in the development of this area, because it is a lot of city residents that go out there and recreate in that area, and they want to make sure, or we would like to make sure, that we hear from the lion's share of the people that are out there. In the new year, Jerry and I are stepping off the board. We've had many years of service, we've helped develop the plan. We have to move on now, it's been six years for me, and I don't know, three or four years for Jerry. But we'd like to make sure that the society has an opportunity to continue to look after the best interests of all the people that live in the area.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. I don't know if there are any questions for the delegation or comments. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Good evening, gentlemen. Can you just give me a quick update in terms of the latest word from the province with respect to your submission of the plan and where things are out there? And give us an update in terms of where is the M.D. of Greenview in with respect to some of the challenges that some of their residents were seeing with the plan?
First of all, we're having a meeting with the E.S.R.D. on Thursday of this week. We've been trying to have that meeting for a while, so I don't have a real update. We did get a letter from them dated September saying they had a few concerns about the plan, and that's the reason for the meeting on Thursday. We'll try to find out what those concerns are. I think in a worst-case situation, they will take our plan and roll it into the regional plan that is somewhere down the road. We'd like to, as Dan pointed out, we think there's concerns and issues we need to address now, so we will keep pushing for endorsement from the province. So I can tell you more after Thursday, but that's the latest I know right now. As far as the M.D., as you probably know, there are some issues that have been raised by Grovedale, and we're still working on that. There was supposed to have been a meeting on Wednesday with the M.D., and that's been either canceled or delayed, but so it's still up in the air a little bit.
In the interim, we've included four additional residents of the Grovedale area onto our board to help us iron out some of these issues. One of the major issues had to do with communication. They felt that they didn't get enough information throughout the whole process. So this way, by having the additional board member positions available, they're able to communicate back and forth. I think that there's still a little bit of fear in terms of what this plan actually means for them, but we're hoping to be able to deal with that early in the new year and before we submit our final letter to E.S.R.D., we'll have that issue dealt with.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll have a question for you. So, guys, how is the society handling this transition? I mean, essentially, as I understood, the work of the society was to develop the plan and do the public consultation and the development of the plan. And so what will the society be since the plan is essentially developed with some revisions to come?
Well, in the plan, we had three main objectives to carry on with the society. One was to do an annual report on how things were being implemented, you know, an annual update on how the different recommendations were being handled by the different agencies. That'd be a public report. The second thing was to do, well, every five years, we know we have to update the plan, so that would be one of the roles of the society. The third one, which I mentioned briefly, was this, we are a nonprofit society. We think as a society we can get third-party funding for some of these projects, be it through grants or going to industry, for example, and seeking their help. So that's the three main things we want to do as a society. But the other thing, we have relied a lot on in-kind services from the county to support our work, and we want to get away from that and be more independent. So some funding, like we only have a postal office number, or we need to rent a postal office box, for example, we need liability insurance for our board, things like that. We need a place to run meetings and so forth.
See Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I wondered if you could just answer a couple of questions for me. I see a great value in your organization, and I appreciate the work that you've done in the past. At this point, am I right that the County of Grand Prairie has funded you $10,000?
Yes.
And the M.D. of Greenview, you asked for $10,000 as well?
To my knowledge, it hasn't been decided yet.
So based on that discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion to fund the Wapiti Corridor Society to the ask of $5,000.
Sure. So Counselor Clayton, any motions arising from the delegation portion? I think we probably do under the delegation portion of the agenda. So we'll take that as advisement, but we would deal with it at the end under the delegation portion. So we'd have any other discussion? Any other questions for the delegation at this point? Seeing none, then, gentlemen, if there was anything else you want to present?
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is still the delegation portion. You didn't have to let us know ahead of time that you were going to come down. You're absolutely welcome to come and address council. We do make this opportunity available every two weeks when council has our regular city council meetings. Doesn't look like anybody else is coming forward, so I can only imagine that everybody's here for public hearings. We will close the delegation portion of the agenda, and we move on to public hearings. And the first one on our list tonight is Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-21, Center West Business Park rezoning from urban reserve to industrial general. I'd call this public hearing to order and look for an introduction from Administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I'm presenting Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-21, so rezoning from urban reserve to general industrial in the Center West Business Park. So could I get the presentation on the screen, please? So this is just a map to show you the location. It's just south of Highway 43 and to the west of 116th Street. It's in the Center West Business Park next to the Richmond Industrial Park. So the current zoning is urban reserve. This zoning is used to hold land until it can be designated for a specific purchase purpose for future development. It's being rezoned to general industrial to accommodate commercial and industrial uses. As you can see, this surrounding uses are also industrial, and the urban reserve to the south is intended for future industrial as well. Here, we just have a context map to show you some of the businesses in the area. So to the south, it's undeveloped land, and then surrounding it is commercial development and industrial uses. So we can see an image of the site here, it's currently undeveloped. We can see to the north of the site, there's some commercial development, and to the southeast, it's currently undeveloped as well. So the municipal development plan indicates that the area is intended for industrial uses, so this application conforms to that. As well, the West Industrial Area Structure Plan also indicates that the area should be used for industrial uses. And the Center West Business Park Outline Plan also indicates that the area is reserved for future industrial uses. So in summary, all of the planning policies support this rezoning, and use is complementary to adjacent uses. Administration recommends that this application be given second and third reading.
Thanks very much. At this point, any questions for Administration from council? Is anybody ringing in in the queue? So we move on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Was there anybody here to speak in support of the application? Let's see, one gentleman coming forward. Please introduce yourself, Recording Secretary.
Mayor Given, counselors, I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the developer and submitted the application for the rezoning. Basically, a formality, the area is subject or ready for development, and developer wishes to proceed with that. So for a multitude of reasons, I guess, it's never been rezoned, so I'm more basically just, if you have any questions, I'll answer them, and be pleased to do that.
Any questions for the delegation? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in the queue, so I think we're fine. Thanks very much, Mr. Rossler. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in support or in favor of the application to rezon? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition or opposed to the application. I don't see anybody coming forward again. I'll ask one last time, is there anybody that would wish to speak to this application, either in favor or opposed? Again, I don't see anybody, so before I close the public hearing, one last opportunity, council, any questions for Administration? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we move on to business arising. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I'd like to move second reading of bylaw C-1260-21 to reserve, rezone the area from urban reserve to industrial general.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Third reading, please.
Thanks very much. Counselor Logan moves third and final reading. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That'll take us to item 6.2, a public hearing to make a land use bylaw text amendment to add new definitions for microbrewery and brewery. Look to, I'd call this public hearing to order and look to Administration for an introduction.
An application has been submitted to locate a microbrewery in the C.A. Arterial Commercial District. What is a microbrewery? Simply stated, a microbrewery is a brewery that produces a small amount of beer. In order to accommodate this request, Administration determined that a definition for microbrewery would need to be added to the land use bylaw included and included in the C.A. Commercial Arterial District. Administration is proposing additional amendments to add the definition for brewery and to include these definitions as permitted or discretionary in the appropriate districts. In considering an amendment for a land use bylaw, Administration must determine whether the proposed amendment reasonably carries out the intent of the municipal development plan. Council's commitment to promoting emerging trends in small business is expressed in the following policies and objectives in the M.D.P. And you can see the objectives here. To recognize emerging trends in retail and commercial land uses, and to support commercial development opportunities that support a complete range of commercial choices. So the land use bylaw definitions that are being proposed here are: Microbrewery means a facility licensed by the Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission where beer and malt beverages are made on the premises and sold or distributed, and which produces less than 15,000 hectoliters of beer annually, and does not produce any odor that is noticeable outside the building. This use shall be approved only in conjunction with a restaurant, drinking establishment major, drinking establishment minor, liquor store, or retail store general. This does not include brewery. And brewery means a facility licensed by the Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission where beer and malt beverages are made on the premises and sold or distributed, and which produces more than 15,000 hectoliters of beer annually. This does not include microbrewery. These definitions address the size of the operation, the potential odor, and incorporating a commercial element. So the microbreweries that produce less than 15,000 hectoliters, or breweries that produce less than 15,000 hectoliters would be microbreweries. And over 15,000 hectoliters is a brewery. And the reason for using the hectoliters to determine the size is that the A.G.L.C. requires breweries to record and report production limits. Therefore, this approach would not place an additional burden on the breweries and can be determined without expense for the city. Advantage to this over using a square footage requirement is it allows for flexibility and more potential to use existing vacant buildings. Odor is addressed in the definition as well. Our research has indicated that microbreweries typically use a condensed ventilation system, which means that any byproduct ventilated during the brewing processes contained inside the building cooled and disposed through a sanitary system. And the intent of including odor in the definition is to ensure minimal impact on adjacent area in the event that council decides to allow small-scale breweries in the C.A. Arterial Commercial District. And incorporating the commercial use, the reason the applicant feels that the microbrewery needs to be allowed to locate in a commercial district in order to gain exposure needed to be successful. As the brewing of beer is a form of manufacturing and therefore typically an industrial use, Administration feels that it should only be allowed in the commercial district if it incorporates a commercial element such as a restaurant, retail store, or liquor store, and does not create nuisances typically associated with industrial uses, such as noise, odor, and outdoor storage. So the proposed land use definitions are that microbrewery is listed as discretionary in Arterial Commercial, discretionary in Business Industrial, and permitted in General Industrial, and that brewery is listed as discretionary in General Industrial and Heavy Industrial. Listing it as discretionary means that the proposals are evaluated on their own merits and characteristics of the specific sites, adjacent landowners are notified, the Community Growth Committee will make the decision to issue the development permit, and that decision is appealable to the subdivision and development appeal board. Other issues such as parking landscaping and buffering adjacent uses and potential site-specific requirements are addressed in the development permit. For communication, Administration followed the Administrative Government Act and land use bylaw requirements and advertised in local newspapers for two consecutive weeks, and notified adjacent and/or internal and external agencies. Aquaterra expressed concern with possible odor in the neighborhood and the potential need for special pretreatment of effluent before discharge to the storage system, and the applicant is working with Aquaterra on this matter. And although this application is for general text amendments that would allow a microbrewery to establish in numerous land use districts, Administration is aware that the applicant intends to locate on a specific site. Therefore, all adjacent property owners within 60 meters of the applicant's proposed location were notified of these land use bylaw text amendments. The applicant included a brochure in the notification letter and held an open house on December 8th in order to provide information about the proposal and to answer questions for affected landowners and the general public about their proposed use. So finally, Administration recommends that second reading be given to bylaw C-1260-20 being amendment to the land use bylaw, and that third reading be given to bylaw C-1260-20 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions at this point for Administration? I actually have one question. What ability, does council have the ability to amend second reading to include additional land use districts if they chose?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, maybe, I guess, two questions, Administration. One that came up on this was waste, and how that's going to be dealt with. And the other one is for the microbrewery, I don't know if that'd be the question here or to anybody who's coming up to speak in favor of it, located close to homes in other areas, and how they've incorporated that living. So I would like to see some of that.
Is that something Administration feels they can speak to, or is that better left to the applicant?
I think for the most part, better left for the applicant, but with the discharge of waste, Aquaterra is working with the applicant on the process that they intend on using, and Aquaterra standards would, if council wants those things to be protected for future microbreweries in order for them to use the same approach that this applicant is going to use, that would fall under Aquaterra's standards to require it.
Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wondered if you could, if Administration could explain a little bit more why the decision in the proposed table to have the business industrial, microbrewery use as discretionary as opposed to permitted?
Just looking at the other uses that are allowable, and because the associated uses are not permitted in that district, such as restaurant or liquor store, I think that's why microbrewery would, or that is the reason why we propose it to be discretionary in that district, for those other uses.
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So my question is a reaffirmation or confirmation. Tonight, we're just looking at including two definitions right into our land use bylaw.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
At some point, as you have shared earlier, a specific At some point, as you have shared earlier, a specific application could well be made that would, would have to work its way through administration, through committee, before anything happened.
Thank you, Mayor Given, that's correct. An application, if this is permitted in the district, then it would be a discretionary use, which would follow the steps of adjacent notification to landowner, to neighbors, as well as presentation to the community growth committee for the decision, and an opportunity to appeal the decision.
Thank you very much. Counselor Radburn? I don't see any other council members in the queue, so we'll do the same as we did with the previous public hearing. We'll open it to presentations or submissions. We'll start off first with those in support of the application, so I'd ask anybody that's in support of the application to come forward. Gentlemen, come down, you can have a seat, and introduce yourself to our recording secretary, and you're welcome to make a presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Given and councillors. We're here on behalf to of GP Brewing Co. in support of the amendment for the land use bylaw to introduce the microbrewery into the definition of the CA district. Myself, in my presentation, I'd just like to briefly touch on just the trends of microbreweries within cities. Currently, right now, all the major cities in British Columbia, Alberta, and moving eastward are, you know, introducing microbreweries into the city centers. Largely, this has to do with the improvements of technology.
Just say, I'd hate to break your stride.
Sorry.
Just ask you each to introduce yourselves.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For our recording secretary.
Jason Patrone with GP Brewing Co., sorry.
My name is Matthew Tony.
Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Mayor Given. So again, I just wanted to briefly touch on the fact of, you know, we're just following the suit of trend as well as other cities, major cities that are taking on, taking on the responsibilities and improving the production of beer. Our particular location, we are really looking forward to the ability to increase economic opportunity with the, with the production of beer, as well as reduce some crime that we face in that area. Matt's going to briefly touch here on your, your question there, Mr. Counselor, in regards to the wastewater and byproduct that's produced from breweries and what we're going to do with it.
I know there's some definite concerns when it comes to brewing, especially within the area of the city limits. One of them being smell. With designing this brewery right from scratch, we try to be as diligent as possible in our design so that we impact the community as least as possible. With smell, what we've developed is a brew kettle with a condensation stack, so we're not actually venting outside. When the actual wort is boiled, the steam stack actually goes up, a condensation line, a glycol chilled line then hits that stack, cooling the condensation down into liquid, and then disposed out through the drain. Now, when we talk about stuff that goes in the drain, this is 100% clean water. There are, there are five things, four things that have packed a brewery's waste. They are the BODs, which is biochemical oxygen demand expressed by the milligram. There's also the chemical oxygen demand, the COD, as well as total suspended solids, which is solid waste, or the TSS, and the actual pH level. The byproduct of brewing and the steam that comes off the stack is 100% clean. It is pure water. It's the purest you're going to get. That is discharged into the city drains with no testing. That is 100% clean water. The other waste that comes with brewing is the solid waste and the BOD waste is the major ones. This is a byproduct of mixing the actual grain and the yeast, the fermentation process. When we did our initial design, all this waste is 100% preventable. We are actually not discharging anything to within the city drains. It is all built into our system where it's automated, goes into a spent grain bin and discharged. Anything that we do discharge, whether it's on the cleaning purpose, it's tested, treated, the pH is adjusted before it is dumped down. We've also adapted a new automation system that has mechanical screens, so anything actually discharged beyond the spent manway has gone through a three-filter screen with charcoal filter, and we've worked with Aquaterra on this, and I'm, still am currently working with them on that. I'll just even show to you, if I may, if this can go up. Can we blow it up a little bit, or? I can even pass this around.
Zoom in a little bit, I think from our camera there. A little bit more, a little bit more.
The first process to brew and beer is actually mixing the grain, which occurs in the lauter ton. If we were sitting here 10 years ago, this little blue line right here going down would be directly into the city drains. In this case, it's not. This is directly into the spent grain bin. The reason why we chose to do this is the spent grain actually is of value to us. It's not an expense. This is highly valuable cattle feed for us, so there's no disposal into the actual drain from this process. As we move over, we'll see the next piece of equipment, which is actually the brew kettle. Again, this is where the wort is actually brewed, and this is where the beer actually takes its form, so to speak. You can actually see the condensation stack right above here in the glycol chilled line, so that's where the water's actually dripping through, so there's no ventilation outside, as well as, this is not tied into the city drains at all. What's also good to notice, and I can pass this around at the end, there's also, we spent, you know, quite a bit of time and effort designing this system so that there's manway doors for spent grain access, so we can go in there and actually rake it out, so that it never reaches the drain. All these practices are widely adapted by the brewing industry these days. There are few that still dispense into the city drains within, within city limits. This is a fully automated system. It is cutting-edge technology. We definitely are an eco-based brewery with our involvement with Aquaterra, as well as another local water program that we're part of. We have a consultant, Paul Hoyn, who's received three EcoStar awards, that's more than diligently working with us on our policies and procedures for solid waste, BDOs, CDOs, and the pH level. The other concern that I know sometimes arises is of cleaning of the tanks. So what takes place here is, beyond this, this is one of our actual tanks, this is actually called a uni-tank, this is where the beer is actually aged. We have what we call a CPI system in this brewery. It stands for Cleaning-in-place System. So 10 years ago, what would have happened is a giant hose would have been hooked up to this, and everything would be dispensed onto the floor. What happens here is the tank's actually pressurized with the chemical, and then the spray ball nozzle actually moves around up top, cleaning the tank. Anything inside the tank is then discharged back to the CPI system. The pH level is then tested, it's then gone through that three-screen process, and then where we use an alkalinity cleaner, we adjust the alkalinity to neutralize with an acid tablet, or vice versa. If we do an acid wash, then we use the alkalinity tablet. The pH is tested to make sure it's well within the allowable range, and then it's discharged. All these policies are well within the range of bylaw C 11-39. Our average BOD count, what we're anticipating, is less than 12 milligrams per liter, which puts us well under the 500 allowable range. I know there's been some concerns regarding sound. The breweries is as noisy as running water. It's what it comes down to. Essentially, we're taking a raw material such as barley, we're mixing it with water, and then boiling it. The aging process and fermentation process does not generate any sound, this is just stagnant liquids sitting in a tank. The canning process is limited to the sound of a power drill. In terms of transportation and traffic impact, the average restaurant within Grand Prairie receives anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 pieces of product over the course of a week, spanning over six to 10 deliveries. As a microbrewery of this size, will incur deliveries of 80 to 100 pieces, 90% of those being pallet drops. So nice, quickie, easy drops for unloading. Can and grain is bimonthly as well, limiting the deliveries and impact on that.
I think that's it at this time. Do any of the councillors have questions for us? Sure, thanks, gentlemen. Counselor McLean?
Thank you for that presentation. Just one more question is, do you have any pictures? I see you've got brochures of any microbreweries that are within surrounding areas of people living, that they're successful? Like, I'm, this is new to me, microbrewery, so I, that's my question. Are they close to some homes where they're at now, and they're all well, and everything's going good?
Within the province, the newest build would definitely be in Canmore, Alberta, that'd be the Gritsy Paw Brewery, and there is residential within 35 feet of their building. They are not classified as a microbrewery, they are a macrobrewery producing well over 30,000 hectoliters of beer. And again, they adopt the same wastewater policies that we do, with no dispensing of solid waste down through the drain.
My last question, Mayor Given. Are you producing ale there?
We will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Counselor Edburn, I saw you ring in there. Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, gentlemen. In the, in the report and in Aquaterra's, I think, letter talks about special pretreatment of effluent. Is that what you're working on with them? Or is that where you've kind of, you've shared a couple things that you're doing already?
The pretreatment of a fluid was based on their assumption that all the solid waste would go down the drain. That's not the case at all. We've eliminated that. Everything to do with this whole brewing set, brewing process is local. The barley comes local, and the spent grain will be used local to feed cattle. The pretreatment of the fluid was in regards to older breweries that were, equipment was off-sold after the late 80s, early 90s, that didn't have this technology into it. You can actually, I'll even show you the mechanical screens on the lauter ton. Right here, this is where the actual grain gets mixed with water into what we call a mash. We can see down here, the actual screen process, it's quite thick, it actually spans about nine and a half inches of screens. And those rakes up above help for the cleaning process, that they don't all get worked through it. You can also take note of the manway access right over here, it's quite large, so the tank can be manually cleaned, so we're not, just not going in there with hose and disposing into the actual drain. All the tanks, all our tanks are built with that manway access as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Edburn. Any other questions for delegation? I don't see anybody else ringing in, so, gentlemen, thank you, thanks very much for your presentation. This is still the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in favor of the application? Just come forward, again, introduce yourself, and welcome.
Hi, good after, good evening, Mayor Given and councillors. I'm Chris Balderson, local to Mad Hatters, and also a local farmer in the area, so when this came about, obviously, there's a, there's a lot of microbreweries in every other city around, and we sell malt barley to a lot of people, like our malting and Canada malting that end up sending our barley off to these breweries to use. So when it came about that our chef wanted to take his brewing course and maybe look at getting into microbrewery, I was super excited about it right from the beginning, and I thought it would be a great thing for Grand Prairie. Since we've released the fact that we might have been doing this in Grand Prairie, I think we've had a massive amount of public support, and I want the councillors, so you know, maybe some of the councillors that aren't online and stuff like that, to recognize how many people, you know, signed up and gave us all kinds of positive comments, whether it be online, in person, via phone call. We had probably 40 people come to the, the open house we had at Center 2000, that, you know, there's a few people that had questions and concerns about, you know, smell, noise, stuff like that, that we were able to alleviate their concerns in person, which was great for us to be able to do. And the rest of the people were mostly supporting it, wondering what kind of ales or drinks and stuff like that that we were brewing, and it was really exciting to be able to spend the night with all those people and, and talk to them. Unfortunately, Mr. O'Toole couldn't be here tonight, but we spent a lot of time with him, and he was able to talk to a lot of the residents that came out to that, and after the residents left that night, there was a great deal of continued support from it. I would say that, you know, looking back, there is multiple microbreweries in every major center, even in small towns like Canmore, where there's, you know, you know, quite a population of people that live near the downtown core, and all in commercial arterial districts, so. When we, when we finally got the agenda for tonight's meeting, we realized that it was, it was going up just as a discretionary use, and I think that, as much to our disappointment, I think it leaves it open for, you know, obviously, all the different proposals that come forward, including ours, to get granted on their own merit, you know, as basically the staff said, and I think we're looking forward to working with the community growth committee and working in Grand Prairie to, you know, build businesses and obviously build up the downtown core. I think the, what we have planned for the building is, you know, something that is great, and if I can put it on here, whichever way that is, I think it's, it's something that... I think it's something that's really gonna, you know, you know, add, you know, you can see it next to the Mad Hatters building, which is a nice newer building, but I think it, it adds a lot of class to downtown Grand Prairie, and we're going to be long-term residents and people working in the city to, you know, bring more of this stuff about, so. Any other questions for the councillors? I can, I'll answer them at this time, and, thanks very much, Mr. Balderson. I see at least one, Counselor McLean?
Chris, I'm glad you came forward and showed us what you might be doing to an older building, used to be Michael Florin and workout area.
Yeah.
Re-energizing that area. You said about for community safety, how it's going to be good. Are you planning in the back, more lighting, some cameras in the back alley? I heard something about working for safety and making it better, so how's the plans on that, besides just making the frontage look nice?
I think that, you know, right now, I think we're seeing it everywhere with the buildings that are getting used less and less downtown. I think, you know, they're causing everyone the most trouble. You know, they're not well-lit, there's not a lot of staff around for security purposes and stuff like that, and, you know, it's just unfortunately with, you know, with, with the, the traffic and the vagrant traffic that has moved more towards, you know, Muscat CP Park and the Bottle Depot type area, you know, our, our area gets kind of painted with a bad brush, and as far as those people traveling back and forth from the park to, you know, the Bottle Depot and, and back again. We've bought a lot of properties in this area. One, one property we worked with the, you know, community growth to, you know, renovate and fix up, and it ended up being the Canadian Cabs location, which before the time that it was that location, it had people, you know, staying in the shed, and it had, you know, people that were getting drunk there and stuff like that. So we're looking to stay in that area and try and revitalize it, and I think the more staff, the more people around, the less crime there's going to be, you know, the, the, the less safety issues there's, there's going to be, you know, those things, so.
Last one, thank you, Mayor Given. Just on, you won an award recently in Mad Hatters.
Yeah.
For safety, so I want to congratulate you, I'm just, was wondering, like, storefront, I see that, but I'm sure you're going to be doing maybe some things in the back, lighting it up?
Well, the whole back alley, you could see that there's, in, in recent times, we've, you know, relit the whole back alley as it stands right now, and we've got all of our staff, you know, that used to park in our parking lot, parking in the back alley, so they're to and from their vehicles all the time to make sure, you know, if they see people lingering or walking around and stuff like that, so we're doing as much as we can and to make that whole area, you know, as safe as possible for everyone, so, yeah. I think that there's a, there's one house, you know, unfortunately, behind Mad Hatters right now, and up against the apartment building, and it had a small utility shed that recently got burned down, and it's the fact that that person that owns that property lives in Peace River, isn't around, you know, doesn't, has vagrant renters in it and stuff like that, and no one watching it, and it was some of our staff that was able to put that fire out and save a fence and save the rest of the property, so, you know, without our staff being there and keeping an eye on things, I think that, you know, more stuff like that's going to happen than less, and that's what they're, we're in the area for, so.
Okay, thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions? No, I don't. Thanks very much, Mr. Balderson.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Counselor Clayton, I saw you ring in.
Go ahead and go.
At this time? Sure, well, at this point, Counselor Clayton, we go through, we ask for, give a number of opportunities for anybody that wishes to speak in support of an application, then we open to those who may be in opposition, then, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so is there anybody else that wishes to come forward to speak in support of the application? I don't see anybody coming forward for that, so I'll ask if there's anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of the application, sir. Please come forward. Have a seat at the presenter's table and introduce yourself for our recording secretary.
Yeah, my name is Elvin Paul, and love beer, love business, love all those things, but not, not, not where people are living. We've been subject to Mad Hatters for about six years with the noise, the drunks, the pissing, the defecation, the fighting, the drugs, no parking, our fences being damaged, 4 o'clock in the morning, you know, we can't keep people in our apartment block, and that's, we've tried to address it here at city council before. Now they want to add some kind of brewery, commercial enterprise there, great thing, like beer is good, like I said, and an industrial thing like this, it's dangerous. This is 15, 15, maybe 15 feet from people's bedrooms. I don't know if you guys would want to bar 15 feet from your bedroom, and having your kids to, you know, go live there, and then add... And, uh, then add also the possibility of, you know, we could have a, an industrial explosion of some kind. There's pressurized vessels there. Um, I just don't see that this is the place for it. I mean, put it, put it in industrial area, I'm all for that. But this bar stuff that you got going here is just isn't working. It's not working for me, not working for the people that are sleeping fifteen feet from, from mad hazards as it is. There's a parking issue already. There's, when that place gets busy, it just takes over all of our parking, the fronts of our streets, they drive. I put a brand new fence up, it's all smashed down. Um, and this is going on and on and on. And we're supposed to live in this environment. And I just wanna ask all of you guys sitting here, how you would like to live in that environment, try and make your business run. Cause we've lost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars with this existing bar here. And they have no respect for our, you know, our wanting to live a quiet life in our building there. And we've put lots of money into our building. So that's, that's what I'm basically saying. This is just a, it's a bad idea along with a bar fifteen feet from where people are sleeping. The other thing is the city doesn't, uh, it doesn't look after the bylaws. There's noise there till four o'clock in the morning. Nobody's there doing anything about it. And it's just an, it's a nightmare. And, uh, I would like to see all of you guys live like that and put, put yourself in that, what you would be doing about it. And now they wanna add some other kind of drinking thing. And, uh, I'm just totally opposed to it.
Thanks for, Mr. Paul. Any questions for the deli? Before you leave, everybody, everybody gets a chance in the hot seat at least.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, I see councillor McLean in queue with a question.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm, I'm glad you came forward and, uh, brought these issues. I think this, I don't know if it's a pub or outing, restaurant combination has been approved for a few years now.
Long time.
And I'm wondering about this, um, microbrewery. I don't think that thing's gonna be opened up like the pub as well. Are you talking about you live in that apartment building? That's your apartment building?
I own that apartment building.
Apartment building.
So I know the finances, I know what we rented out for, I know the problems for the last, since they've opened. When the, the restaurant was there, we never had an issue. And, uh, you know, there was a Chinese restaurant there. It was just no problems at all. But since they've moved in and they've had the, uh, you know, these things going on till four in the morning, people are trying to sleep. You know, there's fights going on, they're, you know, defecating on my fence and peeing and fighting and drugs and people pulling up in the back alley, their cabs and, you know, you can't get people with kids to live in that building. They just go like, you, you go over there and live and there was the, uh, crime prevention came and said, all those things are occurring. And, uh, they gave some suggestions which we followed up and put the fence in, but since then they've smashed, smashed our fence down. Uh, it's just an ongoing thing. You, you, it's, it's, it's a nightmare having a bar fifteen feet from where you're sleeping.
Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, in regards to people living in the area, I live in the area. So I'm familiar with, uh, the businesses that carry on there. I personally have not had any issues with the business that, uh, does business there right now, but I don't live in the back alley to it. So, um, I can understand some of your concerns. I guess my issue or my question is to, um, this application is for a business that's not necessarily gonna create any more day-to-day traffic. It's not gonna create any more people in the facility drinking. It's actually a production business. So I don't really see it as a concern to you going forward and with your current issues.
Okay, but it's a, it's an industrial site with pressurized vessels and that's another issue with regards to safety. And would you want it in your backyard with pressurized, uh, vessels and everything else? See, it's not meant, uh, you know, it's meant for an industrial site.
Anybody else? I don't see anybody else in the queue. So your time in the hot seat wasn't too long. Mr. Paul, thanks very much for being here tonight. Can you make a presentation? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the application? Um, I'll ask one last time if there's anybody that wishes to speak to the application in favor or opposed. And I don't see anybody else coming forward. So, uh, one last opportunity for council to ask any questions of administration. Uh, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, just a question of administration. I know if you go directly across the street to the south, behind it, there was a couple of buildings become more commercialized and the zoning has been changing. And I know this area, there's a apartment building, but there's like three or four houses. Is there, is there talk that there's some zoning changing in that area or it's as is, like the alleyway is the line in the sand kind of thing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would have to look at the zoning map, but I believe that the houses, uh, behind the alley are RT, residential transition. So that sort of as they develop, they would transition to higher residential use and that sort of thing. And then the strip there is all, um, commercial arterial. And I think there's one house on that block that would be developed for commercial if something happened to it.
Okay, councillor McLean, any further questions? So at this point, we're offering for questions for administration before I close the public hearing. So if you don't have any further questions for administration?
I had one more. Um, safety on this issue, um, I want administration about, uh, provincial or federally how it's regulated. We hear about the pressurized vessels and, um, monthly this is inspected. I don't think this has been asked, like how is this done? This is new to me. I don't know.
Is that a question administration can answer?
Somebody.
I've, I think I would defer to the applicant to answer this question. I did speak with, uh, Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission and I do know that this is a heavily regulated industry, but possibly if the applicant could come up to speak to it.
Councillor McLean, you're looking for some technical details around that issue. Sure. So we'll ask the applicant to come forward. See that there's some documents there. Uh, so councillor McLean, your question specifically was around?
On, I asked, well, one of the safety was on crime and lighting, but this one's on. I, I am a little worried about if an incident happens. Is there circuit shut off or like we were talking about pressurized vessels and that? How's, how's the system working and protocol following up by the government?
So, so provincial system safety and what government regulations are, provincial regulations are? So we'll start with the safety of the mechanical systems and the pressurized vessels.
So we are inspected, uh, monthly by the AGLC, uh, to ensure that all equipment is maintained and held up to standard. In terms of pressurizing of vessels, I'm not sure exactly, um, what that comment, uh, meant to intend. Our vessels are designed so that they actually hold, uh, less than two pounds per square inch of pressure. A garden hose has more pressure. If these vessels ever were to break, it'd be a slow leak onto the floor. That's all that would happen. Uh, being a fully automated system as well, we have sensors, uh, it's fully automated. It goes online. We receive emails, text alerts, and then a phone company from the actual monitoring system, NSI in Abbotsford, BC, which is monitored twenty-four hours a day. Uh, you can even see on the top here what's the most important.
I'll catch you there. I think it's upside down. So, oh, it's tough, it's supposed to go, but. So if you would just wanna center your image that you're gonna refer to in the center of this.
The most important, um, piece of this document for this is the, the headspace is calculated at, uh, twenty-four point six percent. Um, pressure, you know, with beer, uh, occurs with the fermentation process and the yeast actually turning over gas. Um, what this is basically saying is our headspace, we're only fill maximum capacity of the tank. Could only be at seventy-six percent, allowing all that headspace for breathing. Uh, we also have the valves, uh, located on the, the top, which are pressurized vacuum release valves uh, that are on all the tanks. Uh, these are also automated, uh, which as soon as we reach four pounds of pressure, it will automatically vent the tank. There is no, there is no way that this tank would ever blow. There is no fire source near it. Uh, it is essentially yeast and, uh, wort at that time. The pressure is minimal. A garden hose again has more pressure than this. We're not talking about whiskey or rye, um, or even rum. And that as it ferments, it builds a, an off gas. Beer is one hundred percent totally different. Um, if you're to look inside one of these uni tanks when it's aging, uh, the liquid is stagnant. There's no bubbles generated from that.
One last one since these came up. Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, you said Camrose or Canmore had one within so many feet of residential?
Correct.
Is there a chance of sending that to council as well and whatever? I, I've never noticed that before. It's new to me, so.
Just, I'll, I'll just break in to say that.
To see that.
Should this, uh, amendment to the land use bylaw go forward? The applicant would still be required to come forward, uh, as it's a discretionary use. The applicant would still be required to come forward for this specific use to be applied, uh, to the specific building or property. So I appreciate the information on the technical items about the process and the modern process. Um, but when we get to, uh, so there'll be an opportunity for those types of things, uh, around the specific application on the specific site. But at this level, we're talking about the land use zones in which this may or may not be appropriate.
And I get that. I just threw one out there.
Uh, thank you very much for answering, um, those most technical details. I think that's got councillor McLean's question. Councillor Clayton?
All right, uh, if we're done with the questions, I have a, I have a motion I'm prepared to.
You don't get to make a motion until I close the public hearing. And I'll, I'll, uh, ask for motions arising. Um, I'll do that in just a second. So I just had a question myself for administration. Um, uh, at the outset, I asked if council had the ability, uh, to add this as a discretionary use to an additional zone. Is that possible?
Yes. Yes, that is possible at this stage.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, okay. So if there's nobody that would like to speak to the application, no further questions from council, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move to business arising. Uh, councillor Clayton?
I'm prepared to make a motion, uh, with a slight amendment. Uh, I'd like to move that second reading be given to bylaw C twelve sixty dash twenty, uh, with the amendment, uh, that the CA arterial commercial, uh, use be, uh, changed to permitted as well as the business industrial, uh, land use district be, uh, changed to, uh, permitted. And if all right, I'd like to speak to the motion.
Uh, so councillor Clayton is, uh, proposing to move an amendment to second reading. And I just wanna confirm. So just wanted to confirm with administration, um, that it'd be appropriate. So we're gonna actually be amending second reading. Uh, so councillor Clayton's proposing amendment to second reading and then we move on to second reading as amended. Okay, so councillor Clayton, uh, you can speak to your amendment, which would see, um, the CA district and the IB districts, uh, both be recognized as permitted use rather than discretionary as currently in the recommendation. Go ahead if you'd like to speak to it.
Thank you. Speaking to the motion, I feel that administration's done a lot of background work here and based on the word, uh, the text amendments with the two, uh, new definitions, uh, being suggested that they be allowed, uh, in either of these districts as permitted. And the reason I believe this is, uh, would be a great addition is because the addition of the restaurant, drinking establishments, uh, liquor stores, retail stores. I'm, I, I'm confident that administration's done their work and I think that none of the applications would be in areas such as residential areas, et cetera, that, that, uh, um, we would have any concerns about. So I think that based on the definitions of the microbrewery and the brewery, I would be prepared to make the motion as well. Um, uh, with the motion I made, I want just one small comment. I recently visited, um, a small microbrewery attached to a hotel. And, um, obviously the comfort of the people that are staying in that hotel is utmost important. And there was no smell, uh, no concerns at all with this, uh, property. So as well as the applicant has talked about, uh, residential areas that are very close to these types of facilities. There are other businesses, um, that are attached to these types of facilities. And I think with, uh, these additions, uh, it's sort of just delays, uh, sorry, with these changes, it would prevent delays in opportunities that would be, um, great, uh, great for our community and great for, uh, industrial and commercial areas in our community.
Thanks councillor Clayton. So we have councillor Clayton's motion to, uh, make an amendment to second reading, uh, which would, uh, recognize the, uh, opposed, um, change to land use bylaw, uh, to see the CA district and IB district as permitted uses. There's discussion and debate on that amendment. I, um, I don't see anybody ringing in for discussion and debate on that amendment. Councillor McLean?
Yeah, and I, I think it's fairly new to our city and, um, I would like to see more feedback and more knowledge on it. So, um, you're saying permit it, let's do it without analyzing a little bit more? And coming to the committee here, what do you mean by when you want to permit it? Automatic?
If it is a permitted use, then, uh, the development, uh, would go forward, uh, and would not need approval from the committee for that use. Um, it would go through administration to. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. Um, that motion does carry. Council, I had, uh, an additional amendment, uh, that I wonder if there'd be somebody that would be willing to move it. The reason I asked the question was, uh, particularly with regard to the CC district. Uh, I think our central commercial district, uh, which covers the majority, well, which covers our downtown is an additional district where this would be, uh, quite appropriate. So would there be somebody that would be willing to move that we, uh, in second reading to also include the CC district as a permitted? Well, actually I'm fine either permitted or discretionary. Um, councillor Terren?
Yeah, um, I'll make that motion. I'll move that, uh, within the, uh, land use bylaw that it be included, that microbreweries be included within the CC district as a permitted use.
Thanks very much councillor Terren. Uh, so that's, uh, so we have one amendment, second and additional amendments to second reading, discussion and debate. Um, I'll just, uh, say that, um, in my experience, uh, these are very common in city centers. Um, and I think council's intention with our downtown CC district is to make it, um, generally as broadly, uh, flexible as possible. And so I think this is a pretty appropriate use there as well. So I would, uh, ask council to support that. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Edward?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I'm not comfortable with the, uh, with the permitted status if it would have been discretionary. I think, uh, it would be, as I voted in the initial motion. I believe that admin got it right in terms of the opportunity for the neighborhood to present their case when something is discretionary. And, uh, that's why I voted no to the initial motion. And that's why I'll vote no for this motion. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Edward. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in. So we'll call for the vote on councillor Terren's motion to add the, uh, microbrewery as a permitted use in the CC district. And that motion also carries. So we'll move on to, uh, second reading as amended. Councillor Clayton, if you'd like to make the motion for second reading as amended?
Thank you, Ma- uh, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a motion that second re- reading be given as amended to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash twenty, uh, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Open for discussion and debate on second reading. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was all in favor of ale. Probably gonna get it anyways, but I wanted more information brought to committee and to look at this cause it's new. As it stands, I, I will not be supporting it. I want, uh, I think the format's been changed.
Thanks councillor McLean. Um, any additional discussion or debate on second reading as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. So we move on to third reading. Councillor Clayton, can I make third reading?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to make, um, move that third reading be given, uh, to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash twenty as amended, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. So motion for third and final reading. Any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries as well. I believe that concludes all the business for this public hearing. Uh, it would take us to item six point three, uh, the West Area Structure Plan Amendment, uh, bylaw C eleven eighty-six dash one. Uh, I would call this public hearing to order and I will look for a brief introduction from administration, uh, because I believe we may have had a, uh, request from the applicant to recess this public hearing. But, um, we will, uh, maybe have an introduction from administration. Uh, we will go to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Um, so that if there was anybody here tonight who had intended to speak to this application, that they could have that opportunity. Then we'll recess during the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. So, Mr. Welton?
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city has received applications to, uh, for text amendments to both the Westgate Area Structure Plan and the Westgate West Outline Plan. Uh, the purpose of both of those amendments, uh, would be to allow a write-in, write-out access onto a hundred and sixteenth for a proposed Canadian Tire store. Uh, it is the area in red that is identified on, uh, on this aerial photograph in, uh, in the Westgate area. Uh, the applicants intended to be here tonight, uh, to speak at this, uh, public hearing. Unfortunately, I guess there was some inclement weather and their flight was canceled and therefore. And therefore, they have requested that this public hearing be recessed until February 9th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. I'll ask if there's anybody that had attended tonight's council meeting to speak to this application. Looking at our crowd tonight, I don't see anybody rushing to the stage or to the podium. So I just want to ensure that we had that opportunity. Seeing that there is nobody here to speak to it tonight, and there has been a request from the applicant to recess the public hearing or postpone it. We will recess the public hearing until February 9th. And I believe that handles all of our business with that item. Would take us item seven on our agenda. We had no items of unfinished business. Would take us item 8.1 in reports, which are a number of bylaw amendments for area structure plans and outline plans and land use bylaw amendments relating to the Arbor Hills area. Mr. Welton?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has received applications to amend bylaw C-1212, which is the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, bylaw C-1281, which is the Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan and Land Use bylaw C-1260. The purpose of all three amendments is to allow for the development of multifamily on an area that was previously identified as single family as shown in the report and the area that's circled on your map. So we are recommending that those three bylaws be given first reading and the public hearing be scheduled for January 12, 2015. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So we have a recommendation for first reading for a number, and we have to do them each individually, please, and I believe in the order that they are presented. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that bylaw C-1212D being an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan be given first reading.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. There's no discussion or debate on first reading of a bylaw, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, you want to carry on?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that bylaw C-1281-1 being an amendment to the Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan be given first reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Call for the vote on that first reading?
So numbers, I move that bylaw C-1260-22 being an amendment to the land use bylaw be given first reading.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Call for the vote on that first reading? That motion carries. One last motion of this package.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that Monday, January 12, 2015, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers be established as a date, time, and location for the public hearings.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion as to date, time, and location as proposed in the motion? Don't see any discussion as to date, time, and location, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. That will come back January 12th. That will take us to our additional agenda item, item 8.3, public member appointments to, sorry. Oh, pardon me, excuse me. 8.2, yeah, excuse me. 8.2, the 2015 to 2018 operating capital budgets. Counselor McLean, or excuse me, Counselor Logan. Thank you there.
That council approved the 2015 to 2018 operating and capital budgets.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Open for discussion and debate. I would note that administration, at the conclusion of our budget discussions, there was a bit of discussion around one additional item around the fleet charge. And administration has provided some alternatives with that. So Counselor Logan, was your intention one of the alternatives or with the, as recommended forward from the committee?
Recommended by the committee, we can deal with the matter in due course coming through our normal committee system.
So Counselor Logan's motion is the budget as recommended at the end of the day. So we're open for discussion and debate on that. We have open for discussion and debate on the budget as recommended forward at the end, at the conclusion of the budget talks. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I'm going to speak against our budget. One thing that I found, at least in the entire budget process, was it was intense. It was long, it was hard. Sometimes we even fought and growled at each other across these council chambers. But I think outside of all of that, we came up to a decision. Now, we didn't really have a full plate of decision put in front of us until recently this week where we were like, okay, now we can absorb it. But I think what the process is missing was maybe a little bit of reflection. I know I voted for some items that in hindsight and with tax increases and the way the world's turning right now, that I might not have voted with going forward. I know this is a four-year budget plan. I know there's some controversial things that I suggested, but I think we can still delve into our capital and make further adjustments in the future. And I don't think we need to be rushed to approve this budget as is right now. So for myself, I cannot approve this budget tonight. That's where I stand.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, just clarification. With approving the budget right now, in terms of the fleet charges, which we had a number of options are, they would just be left as, I believe, option one, which is just to remain the same. And then if there wanted to be some changes at a later date, that would be, but okay.
I believe that was Counselor Logan's intention as from council committee the whole at the end of the day. Which at that time, there were no additional options around fleet charges. Which is option one, yeah.
And then if I may, I'd like to speak to the budget. I will not be supporting the budget as it stands right now. I think there's a number of great initiatives that we've funded in here. I'm very pleased that we've have significant support for our park and our trail systems. And I think there's a number of road and transportation network systems that have significant upgrades. I'm very pleased to see those go through. Unfortunately, I think that, I'm not pleased with the overall tax increases and the overall level of spending. I think that it's, you know, too great, too much of a burden for citizens to bear, especially looking at residential homeowners and especially people that are getting into the market for the first time. I know it's becoming a bit of a barrier when it comes to financing a new home. You know, additionally, I think there is a, you know, a significant burden on many of our businesses. And I think that, you know, having among the highest property taxes in the province, I don't think it's warranted. Given the, you know, the number of projects that we have going right now, I don't feel that there, there's lots of great projects. I don't feel that they all needed to be funded. So with that said, I will not be supporting the budget, although there are many great initiatives that I am glad went through and will be looking forward to supporting.
Thanks, Counselor Terrence. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I know how I'm going to vote, but I have a question for Corporate Service Director Ken. If it does not pass tonight, what could be done in a motion or proceeding that we can have so we have timeframe or something?
Well, we'd need to pass an interim operating budget in order to proceed into 2015. The capital budget, if you don't approve it, then we won't be doing any capital projects until you approve one in 2015.
So, so Mr. Anderson, there would, I mean, essentially, this is the last council meeting before the new year. So council does need to approve some interim budget?
Correct. If we don't approve an interim budget, we have no funding to continue in 2015.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. So with that, I, I see the city's still going to run and not close the door. We won't make a decision on capital, but we will be able to operate as is maybe of the previous year. And I'd be willing to make that motion. But as it sits now, I'll just get it off my chest where I feel on this. I believe there's a lot of major good stuff in this budget, like tremendous. What I find lacking in two-year terms, my second term, is you have a strategic planning session. You work really hard as a group. And administration takes it off and works even harder to bring it all together. I commend them greatly for the hard work they do. But when it comes down, we do our five days, it's, let's just pass it on to council and go on. I wish we wouldn't have passed it on the council months ago when I voted no because we would have had time now. But with that said, I think we still have time to look at things and change some things. And Laura, I'm more worried about getting it under 3% and making it better for families since we are the highest in Alberta. I could be corrected on that, but you notice Edmonton had 5.2. But if you look at their rate of assessment on a home and how much their tax increases, ours is a bit more than that. And you can go into all facts. And it's not us. A lot of it's provincially, what's going on around our surrounding area. And speaking of a region, I think we got to be going more sooner than later. So with that, I will not be supporting the budget.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would like to urge council to support this motion. What we have to remember is the budget is our document. It's our document. And in fact, as items come forward, they tend to be voted on again as they're being dealt with during the operational year and changes can be made. From word go, once we pass our budget and have it in place, we can start making motions to amend it in the areas that we believe need amending. But you can't throw out everything and just have a black pa, a blank page. If you don't like that this particular project got in that budget, then a motion is all it takes and the support of council to eliminate that. But we have to have something for administration and ourselves to work from. Please pass the budget that we all agreed on and then we could start knocking holes in it. And I would be happy to do that too in items that can be deleted from it. But we have to have our blueprint in place. We have to have our plan in place. Otherwise, we're just leaving administration hanging in the wind.
That's Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also will not be supporting this motion. I feel that although I agree with the comments of Counselor Logan, I am prepared to, you know, support the operating to continue on the operation of the city. But based on the fact, the motion being the operating and the capital, our budgets, I'm not prepared to support the motion. I think that as much as I see the need to have the groundwork laid for administration to order, in order to be effective, I feel that there's some decisions that in a short period of time that we could go back and review as a council, which would make tax increases, et cetera, within our community more acceptable going forward based on the demographic of our community. So based on those reasons, I won't be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Redburn?
If you don't support the budget, you should be making a motion as to how to change or amend that budget. So we can get a budget done. I think we have to also respect the process that we all went through. If there are other things that you want us to look at as a council, then bring it forth and we can look at. But just because the budget didn't go the way we wanted, it is still a work of this team. And I, and I fully understand that some things that didn't go the way that I wanted either. But at the end of the day, we have to, as a group, come to the budget. So I want specific suggestions as to what you think we should cut or whatever. And let's deal with it. We just going to not pass it and then, and then what? I would be more comfortable in terms of the motion if we selected the option, maybe not option one. I'd like to, you know, us to have a discussion of what option with, in dealing with fleet charges. Like to do that. Other than that, I think that it is incumbent upon those who are not for the budget to bring forth a motion for us to look at specific things or, or make a motion to change a process so we can come with a budget for the end of the year. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Redburn. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would request that the motion be split, separate motion on operating budget, separate, separate motion on capital budget.
Sure, absolutely. Any council member can ask to have any motion split at any time. And so Counselor Logan's motion would split. And we would deal with them in the order that they're listed in the motion. So we'd deal first with the 2015 to 2018 operating budget. So I'll ask council, we'll speak to that 2015 operating, sorry, 2015 to 2018 operating. We'll deal with that first. Counselor Terrence, you were next in the queue. Do you want to still speak to it on that basis?
I'll speak to it overall. I just want to address some of the comments made by Counselor Redburn and Counselor Logan in regards to whether we should, you know, debate individual items now or not. I strongly believe that, you know, we, we should, I'd like to get where council is, you know, whether they're for this as an overall plan or not. And if it doesn't go through, then, you know, we can, at this time, prepare to look at some of the, you know, the bigger expenditures and see whether there's a change in support for those. I think that gather my thoughts here. Draw a blank. I'll, I'll go on.
Counselor, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I like Counselor Logan suggesting splitting it, but it makes a little difference if you're not in favor of it because you really got to look at both the pieces, the puzzle of capital and operational. If you're going to reduce the rate, capital's a one-time-year thing and operational will be over the four years. So you can split it whatever you want, but if you want reductions, you got to look at it at both. So I'll be going over to both of them.
Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor. I remembered the comment I was going to make. You know, and I, I think, you know, Counselor Redburn and Logan were absolutely correct in that this is a work of council. And if this budget was to be passed, you know, by a majority of council, you know, I will be going forward and supporting the budget. And, you know, going forward, I won't be, you know, vashing it or anything like that. But I think this is at the point where we have to decide as a whole whether we're okay with the direction going forward or not. And if we're not okay with the level of expenditures, then, then we'll maybe make changes after that.
Thanks, Counselor Terrence. Counselor Redburn?
So what about a referral to council committee of the whole to review our budget? We need to get to a forum, I believe, where we can have a discussion. And those who are not in favor of a budget can share their thoughts and suggest improvements to the budget. So would that be in order, Mayor Given, and council like? The, the splitting doesn't help me either because I do, I agree that they are a package. And does that mean you're going to vote for one of them or the other? Based upon what? I'm sure we have, I'm not sure. We may have suggestions for change in both or in one or the other. So, you know, to go ahead with one. I'm not sure how that would work, Mayor Given. I'm sorry.
I see Counselor McLean's in the queue. One thing I'll say is I think it is important administration doesn't need to have an operating budget in place for January. I think it's unlikely that we will be able to organize a council committee of the whole with all of council in attendance. And that, that's one big thing for me. I would not be in favor of dealing with individual items that weren't already a part of, you know, the options that were there or at least that weren't discussed in front of all council members. Because we have two council members that aren't here that we knew that weren't going to be here. I'd want to ensure that everybody had a vote. I think that's the reasonable thing to do. So I don't mind council giving an opportunity to sort of reconsider if they have, again, specific. I do agree with Counselor Redburn saying we need to come up with some specifics. Because my concern would be in reviewing the budget or going back through again, that we would just re-vote everything that we voted against. And I'm not interested in doing that. So, so, you know, I would, I would, you know. So that would be a challenge for me. But I believe we do need to have an operating budget for January. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the splitting. People could choose to vote against it. If either part failed, then we could have a motion to refer the operating budget and capital to a council committee of the whole. I don't know if administration has an idea of how to set interim. So, yeah, so administration does have a draft motion on how we could do an interim that would allow the budget to be in place for January to allow the city to operate. But then would give time for council and administration to set up a committee of the whole where we could deal with specific recommendations or adjustments that council members on further reflection wish to bring forward. And I think that we would really, my preference would be that the onus in this case is on council members to bring forward specific items that they would like to put on the table. Because at this point, we've asked administration to go through and give us their best advice. Council's had a discussion and debate, and so now it's up to council members to bring forward their specific things. So I think if, if we're going to be looking at this again, I think that would, we'd have to all leave with. I think that we'd have to all leave with that understanding. It'd be up to individual council members to bring things forward. So if the motion to pass the operating budget, because we will do a little bit of split, we've done that, that doesn't carry, then we have a motion that administration has about an interim budget. Council McLean?
That's why I asked the question to Ken was, I do believe three months of remaining the same as we did previous three months going into 2015 would probably be sufficient to finalize a different budget that doesn't pass operational because by law, we have to have an operational budget. We have to. So I would be prepared to make that motion, how you technically wanna word it out, but I think three months would be sufficient. That's what I was gonna make a motion after the votes, however they went.
So right now, we have Councilor Logan's motion to approve the 2015 to 2018 operating budget because we're gonna split it. And so I would, so we're gonna vote on that motion and then we'll vote on the capital. For those that don't wish to support the budget in its current form, then they can, you know, vote for or against. If the budget, either portion doesn't pass, then we could have a motion to, either if the operating doesn't pass, then we could have the interim. If the capital doesn't pass, then we would have a motion to refer a review of the capital budget to a council committee of the whole. So if you don't like it the way that it is now, vote against it. If it doesn't pass, then we'll deal up with the follow-up motions afterwards. So we'll deal with the operating budget. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Ken, if we wanted to do something with fleet charges other than option one, is that operational? Is that capital?
Mr. Anderson?
Fleet charges are operational.
So is there an interest in council to look at, many counselors, to look at options other than option one? Which is what we left with.
So that's an open question to council members?
That's an open question to my colleagues.
So, Councilor Adburn, I'll be, yeah, certainly, if there was an interest to look at any of those, we could make an amendment to Councilor Logan's motion on the operating budget to include either of those. My preference in looking at it was, I believe, was option three, which didn't have the largest reduction and didn't have the largest sort of percentage-wise tax increase, but did collect significantly less in facility charges. And it also didn't leave, if I'm remembering the options correctly, didn't leave the council in 2019 with significant ground to make up. So my preference would be the option three, which does essentially collect less from the tax base for the facility charge. I don't know if others had any feedback on that. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I don't know if there is an opinion. Councilor Thieson?
Sorry, I pushed a button. I thought it was going. Anyways, I'm kind of in favor of what you're suggesting, maybe option three on the fleet charge sizes bars, what type of tax increases we may or may not have. I just have a question for administration. There's a real low number there. I believe it's for 2018, you have 2%. Yeah, sorry, the way it's come up on my iPad, the numbers are all gibbled and gibbled and stuff, so I'm trying to...
The question is why it's low in 2018 for option two, is that correct?
Yes.
It's because the fleet charges are more front-end loaded and less on the back end? So that's the reason?
So, Mr. Anderson, my understanding is under either of the two options, option two or option three, the same amount of money is collected over the period of time? Do you want to speak to the difference in the amount of money that's collected over the period of time? Sorry.
Correct. Options two and three both collect $2.5 million less over the four-year period. Option two has more in the front end for the fleet reserve and lower at the end. That's what gives rise to the declining amount. And being that it gets lower in 2018, that's why it takes 3% in 2019 to go back where it should be.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Councilor Clayton?
Sorry, I forget now where I'm at. I'm thinking on this option stuff. In regards to the options, I see the, some good value in option three in regards to people planning and budget, and it's consistent for families. However, I prefer option two, just on answering Councilor Redburn's question. I think that overall, the 14.6% is more appealing. And I know that heading to 15, we are probably gonna have a tough year, but I think that overall, in the end of things, option two overall is better, in my opinion.
So at this point, we don't have a motion on the table to make an amendment. So we're still dealing with Councilor Logan's motion. So before we go too far to sort of predetermine where everybody is on it, if somebody wants to make an amendment to Councilor Logan's motion for the 2015 to 2018 operational budget, to choose one of those options other than option one, I'd look for that motion. Otherwise, we'll move on and just vote on Councilor Logan's motion. Is there anybody that wishes to make an amendment to choose any of those options around the fleet issue? Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess so I'm amending the motion, or I'm amending Councilor Logan's motion to include option two.
So motion to include option two is presented with regard to the fleet charge, so we can discuss and debate that. Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will not be supporting this amendment. I think that it leaves future councils in a precarious situation where they have to instantly, you know, there has to be a 3% increase right at front end for a year of council to make up, you know, to cover the, you know, the fleet replacement. And I just don't think that's fair to future councils, just to get a, you know, a little bit of a win on lower taxes at this point. I'm comfortable with keeping option one. You know, it's money that's gonna need to be spent, whether we, you know, have the increases later or now. I think it's, you know, more prudent to have it now. And, you know, I'd be okay with option one or three in that it, you know, it doesn't give future councils with, you know, that big burden.
I see a couple others in the queue. I would just say that I'm supportive of option three. It does actually collect $2.5 million less from the tax base. It doesn't benefit this council as directly in terms of perception, but I don't think that's why we do it. I think we say that, you know, we just don't need to collect as much and we can, you know, require administration to work within the funding balance that would be at the end of that term. As Councilor Tarrant said, option three also doesn't leave a future council with a deficit that they then have to make up. And so that, those would be the reasons that I won't support the amendment to include option two. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was glad how administration brought forward the different options and it was a good process that they did. But all in all, it's still higher than, I feel comfortable in saying yes to any option. I was looking at three and two, but, and looking at further councils, but I'm still gonna be voting against it. I believe we need to have our day of reflection and every council brings something to the table that they need to change.
Thanks, Council McLean. Council Clayton?
I guess a question for corporate services. I may have misunderstood Councilor Thieson's question, but from what I understood, the calculations being heavier in the first years and lighter in the second years, overall, didn't, the implications weren't to the plan overall. Have I misunderstood?
Well, the implications are that in year four in 2018, it's a significant jump to get back to the correct rate in 2019. Option two requires a 3% increase based on the current planning assumptions.
Yeah, yeah. So can I amend my own motion?
Maybe withdraw, withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion, sure. And prepare to make another motion?
Sure.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to amend Councilor Logan's motion to include option three.
Thank you. So we're on to option three, Council Logan's motion with amendment of option three. Council Adburn, care to speak to that? You're in the queue.
Yes, since I'm on the queue, I will be supporting the motion. I was interested in two or three. I think we... I mean, and three really doesn't put anybody in a bind, like 0.8%, maybe in year four. So it doesn't put the future council in a bind and we reduce the overall tax impact over the four years.
Council Adburn, any other discussion or debate? We all had a opportunity to have a go-around on that item. Looks like we have. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I'm gonna call for the vote on Council Clayton's motion to amend. Okay, so this is the vote on the amendment and then we'd vote on Council Logan's original. So I'll call for the vote on Council Clayton's motion to amend to include option three with regard to fleet charges. So I'll start the vote. Motion carries. Want to oppose? So we're back to discussion and debate on Council Logan's original motion as amended with regard to the 2015-2018 operating budget. Again, this is operating budget specifically. Any further discussion or debate on the operating budget? Okay. Council Logan?
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button there, but I did want to just remind council that we need to put a budget in place. We can. It is our purview to change the budget, any item in the budget, any range of items in the budget. Let's get this budget done so administration can carry on. And if there's things we're uncomfortable with, we can start changing them first week of January if we wish.
Thanks, Council Logan. Council members, I see a few ringing in from there, but I'm gonna take Council Logan as a close on that. He was the original mover of the motion. I did ask if anybody wanted to ring in. Was the one that did. So I'm gonna call for the vote on Council Logan's motion as amended to approve the 2015-2018 operating budget. And that motion does carry. So that motion does carry, so the operating budget is approved. And we'll move on to the discussion around the capital budget. So Council Logan's original motion to, that council approved the 2015-2018 capital budget. Open for discussion and debate. As I said earlier, if this motion doesn't carry, then I would be looking to a council member to make a motion to refer to administration a capital budget review, likely fairly in the new year, to a council committee of the whole. So any discussion and debate on the capital budget as presented? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion does not carry. And so I'd look for business arising. Also, do we have a motion to refer to a council committee of the whole to review the 2015-2018 capital budget? Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to make a motion to refer to administration for...
To council committee of the whole?
Sorry, council committee of the whole, going forward for discussions of the capital plan for 2015 to 18.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton. So motion to refer to council committee of the whole? If council, if you'd like, care to include one, absolutely.
Sure. I think that the council, I would amend the motion to include the council committee of the whole discussion to happen by the end of January.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton. So to add that to the end of January, open for discussion and debate. Council Logan? Not at this time. Councilor, Council McLean?
Hey, Mayor Given. I'll be in favor of that. It gives plenty of time and capital's not by law. We'll be able to fine-tune it and do whatever we fix and just mix the motions right now.
Council Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Just a question for administration. How prudent do we need to be? Because I would, to me, I find January, the end of January, to be a longer timeframe than I personally am comfortable with. How soon do we send out our RFP processes and all that other stuff?
Mr. Anderson?
Well, it usually starts early in January with some of the construction work that we do. It would not take very long to organize a council committee of the whole meeting for the first half of January, in my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. If I just may comment, Mayor Bill. I'm more comfortable doing something like this in a shorter timeframe so that we can have that budget ready earlier in the year rather than even a month into the year. To me, I find that to be too late. I've done my homework on the budget. I've looked over everything. I have my opinions on certain things and I've changed my mind on a few things on capital. I think we could take a list of everything that's funded and easily go, do we still wanna fund it? Done, you know, and keep, go down the list just like that. We could have this done and the longest, I'm thinking, is a three-hour meeting in all reality. But you never know, right? This is council and our budget process, so...
So Councilor Clayton's motion is, still stands? Council Clayton, you'll have to turn your microphone on if you're...
Absolutely support the idea and the notion of this happening sooner than later. I guess I need to know from administration if it's realistic.
I'm actually gonna answer for administration. Ultimately, it's up to council whether this is realistic.
All right, so I would like to withdraw my motion.
Sorry. Okay, sure, motion, sure. Okay, so we'll accept that motion. Really just says that by mid-month, that this council committee of the whole will happen to review it. Councilor Tarrant?
Yeah, like, one of my concerns was for some of the larger construction projects that they would maybe get delayed because of that. And so I'm wondering, I know there was a few items where there was unanimous support and they're very large items, you know, thinking 68th Avenue, 20th, 92nd Street. Wondering if it would, maybe it would be prudent to maybe have a motion tonight to have those go forward, given that there was unanimous support for them? Just so that we can get, you know, because...
Well, I think the, you know...
Actually, maybe I'll look to Director of Community Growth. Could we get a little bit more of a precise times? When for the larger construction projects like the bridge on 68th? When are the RFPs intended to go up?
I just wanna clarify for council that unless there's been detailed design work done, there's nothing that's ready to go to RFP for construction, right? There may, and there may be, there may be some in the capital program. There may be some engineering costs, absolutely, that administration would like to get started on. I can absolutely believe that. But I would be concerned if we start to go through and say, well, engineering only for this specific project. Like, that's a bit challenging. I think if we're gonna review the capital budget, then we get together and we review the capital budget. As I said before, those that have specific ideas about changes that they'd like to see, then could bring that forward. So I'll say that before administration answers. But I mean, you know, unless we had plans that were drawn up, the only portion is the drawing up of plans, right? So the major portion of the capital wouldn't happen in the first two weeks of January. I don't know if, Mr. Galante, if you wish to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some projects are show-ready, like 92nd Street, for example, because the design has been completed. However, construction will start in the spring, but we can start with the tender process as soon as possible. Other projects like 68th Avenue and the bridge, we need to move first with the design phase. And again, having the approval as soon as possible will help keep the construction cost low and to proceed with the design as well.
Thanks very much. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Worship. Picking the date of January 15th would mean it wouldn't come to council until January 26th, so we'd delay it till the end of the month, basically, by that date. There is a council meeting on January 12th if the date was picked before then.
So I'll just say that Council Clayton's motion was that the council committee of the whole would be to happen prior to January 15th. That could mean January 1st. That could mean December 19th. That could mean whenever, so I'm not so concerned about that. That's the max, Council Clayton's motion essentially sets the maximum amount of time. And if council members are voting for that motion, then we're all committing that we'll make ourselves available for a time that works prior to that, right? And obviously, that suggestion, though, that trying to hit the earliest, any recommendations coming forward from that should get to the earliest council meeting in January would be ideal. Any other discussion or debates? So I believe... So I believe I have a motion. I'm not sure exactly what I've got. No, yeah, what do I have? No, I believe we have a motion to refer to council committee of the whole, a review of the 2015-2018 capital budget, and that review to happen prior to January 15th. Any further discussion or debate on that motion? I don't see anybody ringing in. So then I will call for the vote. And that motion carries. I believe that handles all of our items of business with relation to item 8.2, although I may have been, yeah, for today. We move on to 8.3, appointments, public member appointments to city boards and committees. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to make a motion to move the following committees' appointments, starting with the Arts Development Committee, Ms. Carla Safrani and Ms. Jessica Foley, both for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2017. The Assessment Review Board, Ms. Linda Murphy, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2017. The Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Ms. Lisa Safron, Mr. Jordan Bernas, Ms. Amy McLeod. Ms. Lisa Safron and Mr. Jordan Bernas, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2017. Ms. Amy McLeod, a one-year term ending December 31st, 2015. The Economic Development Advisory Committee, Mr. Rene George, Mr. Robert Engen, Mr. Leif Anderson, all with a one-year term ending December 31st, 2015. The Grand Prairie Public Library, Mr. Mark Evans, a one-year term ending December 31st, 2015. Ms. Shirley Sue Croft and Ms. Tammy Brown, with three-year terms ending December 31st, 2017. The Pursuit of Excellence Committee, Ms. Tiffany Allen, a two-year term ending December 31st, 2016. Ms. Tammy Brown and Ms. Heidi McMahon, three-year terms ending December 31st, 2017. And the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board, Ms. Linda Murphy and Mr. Jason Smith, both with three-year terms ending December 31st, 2017.
Have a drink of water after that. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And would take us into committee business, 9.1, council committee of the whole meeting from November 13th and 14th, and November 19th to 21st. Receive those minutes. Counselor Logan?
Sure, I'll move, receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meetings held on November 13th and 14th, 2014, and November 19th to 21st, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debates on that set of minutes? Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just had noted one error in the minutes. Item 4.1.1. It's not gonna make a difference, but I still would like it noted regardless. It was for the advocacy position, which I was in favor of, and I know I spoke strongly in favor of it, so I may have accidentally, sorry. Counselor Radburn as well.
Okay, so Counselor... Oh, so maybe we have a juxtaposition of votes there? Okay. Yeah, it's an easy mistake to make. I can see how that would happen. Okay, so we'll just ensure that Counselor Terrence on that item was in favor, and Counselor Radburn was opposed.
And then I just had one other question on 4.3.5. It says increased revenue photo enforcement, peace officers, five positions. But then below, it's just listed... I'm just, if, could have an explanation why it says five positions? Doesn't, the motions below don't seem to reflect that number. Oh, five conversions, okay.
So the answer that administration is giving is that there were some conversions. There were five conversions. Okay, that's clear?
Yeah, that's clear. Thank you very much.
So we'll catch that one, that one change with regard to the juxtaposition of our votes of our Bobsy Twins over there? Was there anything else before we adopt those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to 9.2, the Community Living Committee, from December 2nd. Counselor Radburn, is that your set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council will receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held December 2nd, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Looks like that one's all in order. Must, since there's nobody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council deem the property located at 9305 67th Avenue marketable and offer this land for sale to Habitat for Humanity Edmonton for the sum of $1. I've had a request from Habitat for Humanity for a while. Even though it says Edmonton, this is a local branch of Habitat for Humanity. This is a property that has been destroyed by fire. The insurance company will provide that site cleaned up, ready for Habitat for Humanity.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council direct that the insurance dollars received from the insurance settlement be put towards the social housing reserve. Again, there will be some monies in addition to the cleanup of the site that we will receive from the insurance company. And I think it's be only appropriate that those monies go to our social housing reserve because we will be replacing both that property and our Mountain View subdivision sale of properties so that we can support family in social housing. Wherever, probably in the subdivision property, but who knows? But it just starts to provide some money so that we can do replacement projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, any other business you want to have?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've got three other things at committee meeting. One, we report re-youth emergency shelter expansion. And admin was directed to work with Youth Emergency Shelter Society to develop a plan for expansion. And secondly, admin was directed to develop an RFP process for the Young Offenders Building. That process and criteria will be brought back to committee for support, and that RFP will include criteria to be brought back to criteria in terms of how we're gonna decide which proposal to accept, if any. So I think it's appropriate that committee and council will be able to look at that process and those criteria to make sure we're comfortable with it. But it may, that process also may inform our decisions relative to the youth emergency shelter expansion as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. So we move on to...
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. We did move that South Peace Archives had written a letter in terms of where council's at with respect to their proposal. And we directed committee to write to them saying that council was not prepared to approve the project and its location at the present time, but will work with them to identify other opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. So we'll move on to 9.3, the Community Safety Committee, from December 9th. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee held December 9th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess I'll start off with the first reading. Counsel give first reading to bylaw C-1103F to amend the noise and nuisance, public disturbance bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I'll call for the vote on first reading. That motion carries. Move to second reading, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1103F to amend noise, nuisance, and public disturbance bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on second reading? If I remember correctly, this amendment to the noise, nuisance, and public disturbance bylaw basically handed enforcement of certain sections of the bylaw from Development Services Department and Development Services Officers to our peace officers or bylaw enforcement officers. So essentially, yeah, or, sorry, excuse me, yes.
Community Safety Director.
Yeah, excuse me, to the Community Safety Director, which would allow the Community Safety Director, who is, works closely with the bylaw enforcement, who are most likely to receive these noise complaints, be the one that can issue waivers under that bylaw. Any discussion or debate on the motion for second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move council have three readings, bylaw C-1103F to amend the noise, nuisance, and public disturbance bylaw.
I just wanted to check that with administration.
Three readings?
To have third reading, does that only apply to financial bylaws? Or is it up to all? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. You're 100% right. So a motion to have a reading here tonight? So this motion to pass, in order for us to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight, will have to be unanimous, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give three readings, or give the third reading to bylaw C-1103F to amend the noise, nuisance, and public disturbance bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Motion carries. Counselor McLean, I think you have a number of items of business arising?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the proposed street lighting standards.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I'd like to move council approve the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership Regional All-Hazard Emergency Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, any other items of business you want to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I do. There was a store removal update brought by Brian, and basically how now you can get out to your roads and get out of your subdivisions. Success rate has been very good. Most areas are between two and four areas that Greater has been there to remove the snow. Some of the biggest issues which they are working on, a lot, all the residential areas are done by contractors. So they're due to the subdivision, maybe, and not knowing, maybe I'll push the snow on the park side instead of on the sidewalk side. Some of the old subdivisions that have two sidewalks, maybe we'll just push it to one year one side and maybe the other. So they're working that out, and they say it's getting better. I've already seen it around the city and how they're doing it and stuff. And there's some other areas, but I was very glad they brought this update because we did have a change of policy, and it was in the Edmonton Sun as well the other day of how it's working well. Thank you.
Sorry, it was in the Edmonton Sun about how our snow removals?
Yes, it was. Page 26.
Red letter A, we made page 26.
Page 26.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I think that'd take us to 9.4, the Corporate Services Committee meeting from December 9th. Counselor Terrence, I think you handled the chair for that one.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will move that the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee of December 9th be approved.
Thanks very much, Counselor Terrence. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thanks very much. Counselor Terrence, any business to highlight?
Yeah, just, we had one item. It was our, I guess, bi-weekly update on the East Link Center, and we were let know that the RFP has been, someone was selected for the operational review of the East Link Center, and so that was, that's ongoing right now. And we'll hopefully in the, early in the new year, there'll be some recommendations made, and there'll be some things coming out of that. It was also decided that the reports at every meeting were very helpful to council and to the community in terms of keeping people updated with where the deficit was with the East Link Center and what things are being done to remedy it. And, but at this time, we felt that, you know, there's a number of systems that were being set in place, and so we don't necessarily need the bi-weekly update anymore. But we look forward to a number of recommendations coming forward from finance and from Community Living Director in the new year.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Terrence. I believe that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, and for those diehards that stuck it out through this entire exciting, but it's been entertaining. You can't say it hasn't been entertaining. We did have one piece of delegation business with regard to the Wapperty Corridor Planning Society and their request. So I need a motion to deal with that business, either to receive their presentation for information or a motion to, with regard to the funding request. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to make a motion to fund the Peace Wapperty Corridor Society to the amount of $5,000.
Sure, and I think it's just the Wapperty Corridor Planning Society.
Thank you.
Any discussion or debate, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm not so mean-spirited to say no to 5,000. I heard some presentations by becoming a region, and I'm hoping that the wording isn't just pronounced "region," become a regionalization, that we actually become one unit down the road and solid one. But I'll be speaking in favor of this one 5,000-dollar committee.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. This is worth your while. Stick around, I guess. We had no notices of motion. Now that takes us to council member reports, and I'm sorry, council members, I haven't asked ahead of time if anybody had any, but do we have any reports from our external agencies, boards, or commissions? I'll look to my right. I'll look to my left. And if not, then we'll move to council member roundtable, and Counselor Peterson will start on here.
Mayor Bill, I've had quite an exciting couple of weeks since the last council. I'm not going to touch on much because I really, in all honesty, I didn't, this is one of the first council meetings that I barely had a chance to go over all the minutes and stuff, like, not at least to my liking. As far as the week, I had an excellent week this past week in Calgary with the IAC on homelessness, getting to sit at a table with the first mayor ever of Edmonton, Jan Ryber, you know, talking about, you know, housing issues across the province, and then getting the big announcement from the province that they were funding over $700 million worth of RFPs as of last Friday to be tendered out to people who had applied for it. It was great to hear. Now, I can't say that everyone was happy, even, including myself, 33 people around a table, actually 25 were there, but 25 people around the table. We all put our fists down. We found out that all that money was going to seniors, and it's not that any of us aren't against seniors, but we thought there could have been a little more of a mix there. So we have a lot more work to do, and it was definitely a good learning curve for me on the provincial stage to have, share my ideas and have discussions with other members from around the province on what we can do to actually end homelessness in the next, well, four years, because that's all we got left in the Alberta plan to end homelessness in 10 years. So that was, that was very worthwhile, and I'm gonna leave it at that because I could talk about what happened after, but that's for the back room.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan.
I would like to mention two or three items. One was the, my first meeting of the Downtown Disabled Transportation Society, my first board meeting there. Very competent and capable board, and they're looking at some transitions with staffing, but I was quite impressed with that and look forward to continuing to work with it. I also, the same day, December 9th, attended the Grand Prairie Museum Board. It's not as a result of my city duties, but I've been a board member there for some years. It's not as a result of my city duties, but I've been a board member there for some years, and it's been a while since that board met. It was nice to get caught up with that. Center Two Thousand, the board met on December the tenth, a very short agenda, and nothing really to come forward to council's attention from that. The one thing that I really wanted to underline was on December the thirteenth, I attended the Grand Prairie Boys Choir recital, and talk about a stupendous job done by the singers, done by the musicians, and of course, done by the choir mistress. Just a tremendous asset to the community. If there's more sessions going on, and I'm not sure I didn't keep up with that, don't miss it. This is really a holiday treat.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've had quite a few events. I'm not going to give you the detail. I'm going to come along on the process tonight. When I will say I had a recording meeting with the city manager, Greg. I want to thank him for doing that. He did a very good job. You look around, we've got some... I've been on council, or I should... In safety, we're definitely very involved in living. It's coming on down the road here. So actually, it's a lot of good work by our city manager, and I appreciate that. The other thing is I just want to wish the whole council, Mayor Chris, a very, very safe house.
Thanks, Counselor McLean? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll kind of share my list with Terry after, but I will highlight a couple things. A member of colleagues, we went to the Prairie Mall fortieth anniversary cake-cutting ceremony, which was kind of neat, because I hadn't realized it's been forty years, so time flies. Santa Claus Parade is always a fun event for all of us who participate, so it was a great time. I visited the City Hall Call Center, City Call Center, and would recommend and suggest all of us do that. I think it was good to talk to our frontline staffers who are taking all the calls and getting a feel for what they're hearing, so... And just to support them, because I think it's a new initiative, and I think they're doing a great job. And I did represent council on another community group at the Community Foundation Scholarship and Grants Award Ceremony. Two grants that the city received was thirty-five hundred dollars for... From the Come Fly With Me Foundation, for the Pursuit of Excellence to use in the coming year. And then another family gave three hundred and fifty dollars to put towards the extension, expansion of Musco CP Trails. Now, which is something from their family foundation, I guess, foundation or plan giving. That is something that's really important to them, because they're great users of the trails and the park, and so they saw fit to donate to the city those... That amount to put towards that end. So I turned those monies into Kirsten, and she'll get what parks gets, but I was pleased to be there. And I did bring greetings at the Council for Lifelong Learning Holiday Gathering, kind of an impromptu greetings, but I was pleased to be there, to be with those instructors and those students and families. It was a very... It was an excellent community event. And thank you to staff who worked hard to do the City Hall Christmas lunch and the City Hall Christmas party that I was pleased to attend.
Thank you. Counselor Radburn? Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to point out a couple things. I've been, over the last couple of weeks, I've had the privilege to meet with a number of downtown business owners to try and just get a sense of where they're at. You know, I wasn't involved in a lot of previous past discussions that went on down there, and so I was able to come with fresh new ideas and to really see what... Where... What the history was, and I got some really good insight there. And I think there's, you know, cautious optimism with regards to, you know, the downtown enhancement plan. I think people have seen it go through a few times, but I think there is excitement that there is an actual, you know, money commitment there. The second thing I want to mention was, unlike Counselor Logan, I was not able to go to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir, because I waited too long for tickets, and they were sold out a couple of weeks in advance all for their performances, which I think is tremendous news for the community, and just the fact that they're able to, you know, sell out and attract that big of a crowd. I think it bodes well for a new venue in the future.
Thanks, Counsel Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple highlights from the last couple of weeks. As everybody knows, it's been very busy with double and sometimes triple bookings. Three things that were a highlight for me was the Santa Parade as well. It was very well-attended, and I was glad to see all the young families out and many council members. It was a great day, as well as I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Monthly Mixer, which I, in the past, really hadn't had an opportunity to attend before, and it was very well-representative and a nice evening. And last but not least, I attended the Grand Prairie Area Chamber of Commerce AGM to see their new board elected, and it was very... A great turnout as they head into their hundredth year. So there's some centennial events that will be coming up for them that I look forward to. And I just wanted to wish council, administration, as well as everybody in the region, a great Christmas, and I look forward to seeing you all over the holiday season, if possible, and enjoy the time with your family and friends.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Say that we may be seeing council members earlier in the new year with our new Council Committee of the Whole that we've just directed that we might have thought otherwise. I'm just going to report on one item. I attended a number of the others that were mentioned by council members. But this past Friday, I had the opportunity to attend my first AUMA committee meeting. I was accepted as a member of the AUMA Municipal Governance Committee with a three-hundred-page agenda. It was an exciting committee to go to. I just thought I'd chair the council with the 2014 mandates are for the committee, the implementation of local matters, including providing input into the Municipal Government Act review, and implementation of the municipal sustainability strategy, to develop governance and accountability tools for members, for example, viability assessment, amalgamation options, other forms of government, governance, citizen engagement, and disclosure of elected official expenses, to develop an analysis of municipal spending and property tax burden, to determine improvements to the municipal election process and required Local Authority Election Act changes, to review reports on elected official code of conduct and elected officials' conflict of interest, annexations, and amalgamation. So a pretty broad scope of work, but obviously relevant to some of the priorities of our council, and so I'm looking forward to working with that committee through 2014, and happy to be able to volunteer for that. So that was my day in Edmonton, and with that report, I will call our council meeting adjourned.